Like he said that on my feet.
Okay, it is Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning and afternoon. Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the Treasurers July 2022 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
HBA board meeting this afternoon, planning commission meeting this evening. We've got our MAC August Board meeting tomorrow morning, Sol waste management district board meeting tomorrow afternoon. HBA membership meetings tomorrow night. There's a broadband efforts meeting Thursday.
Yeah, I'm going to that.
Chiefs meeting Thursday night, Chamber of Coffee Friday morning. And Lincoln's Casino Night is Saturday night. That is about it.
Jeff has covered everything plus more than I have on my calendar.
I'll share.
Okay. Well, I've got a court tomorrow. Thursday, Council for Drug-Free Youth Coalition is in the morning, so I'm gonna get done with that and then we're on to the broadband. Chiefs Fridays, Friday Coffee, JCPD Chief Wildey. Then I have a National Guard presentation in Lynn. St. Peter's Parish has kind of a fun night Friday night as well. Saturday, I'm hosting the National Guard meeting all day, and then the Blue Tiger Casino Night. That's all I've got. Okay. We're gonna deviate a little bit from our agenda, so we're gonna do the United Way wrap-up first, and then we're gonna go to Ameren, Missouri.
Morning.
You just excited? You wanna hear our totals? Okay, so, as you know, the Health Department took it on. It was Jen Walken, Chesney Schulte, Tara Ferguson, Donna Seidel, and me that were the main leaders, but lots of people at the Health Department helped, and our goal for this year was $12,000. Last year, our county contributions equaled $10,244.92 with no specific fundraising event. The July 22th Cornhole Turner was a huge success. A total of 22 teams competed in two divisions. In the competitive division, first place went to a team named Yahtzee. It was Chad Meewasser and Ben Rinke Meyer. Second place was Drunken and Sinkin', which was Jeremiah Wixson and Justin Asher. Our recreational division, first place went to Team 50-50, which was Jeff Helscher and Paul Dupuy. And second place was Can't Corn This, which was Mark Walken and Chad Walken. So we sold two decks of cards plus two jokers for a total of 106 cards towards the bag boards. Thank you to Jeff for making and donating those boards. So we had $575 worth of prizes donated that we gave away to winners in door prizes, so thank you to Sam, Harry, Mark, Larry, Sheila, Judy, Donell, John, Aaron, Ralph, Christie, and Grant Shorthoes for being generous and donating gift cards. Crazy Fries was the only food truck present, and they donated a portion of their proceeds to the United Way as well. So everything at the event was donated, so 100% of our proceeds from that event will go to United Way of Central Missouri, and our total from that evening was $2,275. So employee pledge cards. Like I said, last year it was $10,242.92. This year, we had 83 employees donate either through cash, check, direct bill, or payroll deduction, and that grand total was $13,185.16. So our grand total for this campaign this year was $15,460.16. So that is $5200 more than last year's.
Thank you. Thank all of you.
Yeah, so thank you to everyone who donated, gave prizes, came to the event, who worked behind the scenes to make it a success and to process payments. I know it's a lot of work for our payroll staff, too, so everyone's contribution is appreciated.
Thank you very much, Chris. Your team did a great job.
Oh, and you get to draw for the prizes for the employees that contributed either eight hours of leave or four hours of leave. So I'll let Sam draw with his fancy flare-oak screen cast.
It's the color of money.
And Melinda. Yeah, Melinda did, so.
Well, you have two prizes, right?
Thank you. I have one.
Oh, I just have one, okay. Christopher?
Secanic.
Secanic, yes.
There you go.
Okay.
He just got a new set of boards, too, so.
Samantha Schulte.
Yeah, she's our new employee now.
And thank you very much. So next year, we can set the goal at 20,000.
And what department did you say was speaking about Sheriff, that's Commissioner? How much of a raise? Oh, Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department.
Well, see, EMS does the Toys for Tots, but yeah, so we'll find a department to help you.
Well, yeah, we've already had other people.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Now, our presentation is Ramona Schatzler, Schatzler from Ameren, Missouri on natural gas safety. I speak very well today. Come on up to the table.
Thank you so much. Okay, so again, my name is Ramona Schatzler with Ameren, Missouri Gas Division. I'm out of the Columbia office, and I just wanted to share today with the Commission and the community about natural gas safety information. And of course, natural gas is a safe, economical, reliable source of energy resource for the community for heating and cooling purposes, and so the fall is upon us. Summer's over, unfortunately, right? And fall is upon us, and gas heating is going to start beginning again. So we're educating about safe measures, being aware of what gas, when it leaks, what it smells like, and identifying it. You're either hearing, seeing, or smelling natural gas leaks, what pipeline markers look like. So if you're planning on excavation and you see pipeline markers with warning "Gas Pipeline, Ameren, Missouri", making sure that you're calling 811 before you plan a digging job, and of course, digging carefully around the marks. And so I have with me a sign-in sheet, so I'll keep record that I visited with you today, and I also have a natural gas safety flyer that we share with the community two times a year, as well as a carbon monoxide brochure that's available on our website. We did update our customer website. We have a crossbar brochure that educates about the risk of crossbar utilities, the utility, potential risk of utilities that can be crossed in sewer laterals. And then did want to promote that we worked with or encouraged Missouri One Call. We had some Spanish-speaking, only Spanish-speaking excavators that we had to do some education with, so we heavily promoted printing the Spanish version of the Missouri One Call brochure, so that was positive reinforcement. And then we also created our own little excavator cards that have Spanish on the backside that we hand out at the excavation site that our damage prevention folks do. I have also the public official letter that we share, so we communicate with all of our public officials annually. We send out a letter advising them what our emergency response is and what we expect as far as in a gas leak situation for public safety. So I have a copy of that to make sure that the Commission is aware that that went out, as well as the emergency brochure. Another thing that our gas division does is we provide school programs for the community, and I mail that out in September, and so I do have a sample goodie bag that I will share with you to just see what all we share with the community. We talk about gas leak safety. If they smell gas, leave fast. They have some goodies in here, and then we also promote 811 with them, explaining what the flags look like and what utility colors are. So I have that for you all, as well as a current excavator packet manual that has all the goodies Missouri One Call offers with a pen, the full excavator manual, the customer brochure that's in the kids' bags, and a full ticket pad and information. So I've got all of those things for you today, but that is what I wanted to share with you, so thank you for having me.
Any questions from? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will. Yeah, Jeff likes things that he can color.
He's really nice to you today.
Thank you.
Or we need to all sign the list, and is that what you're saying?
Yes, and public officials does include our sheriff and EMA, so if I could get those signatures as well, I would really appreciate it.
Our emergency management, he is on vacation in South Carolina, so. Yeah.
And that's okay if I need to.
You just wanna fill it all out, then? Because it's not a signature, it's just the list of.
Oh, thank you.
Probably Bill read your handwriting better than mine, anyway.
Next, I'm gonna put all these in a folder, so you guys just have a folder, so.
We do have a thing on the wall that we have packets hanging on out there, so we can.
Okay.
And we may have one in there already.
Yeah.
Okay, and so then here is the. So this is the emergency. This is the emergency letter that goes out to public officials, so just wanted to make sure that you had.
Look, Debbie's in our show.
Some of the other things that Ramona does is that she does programs for the fire departments. She talks about natural gas safety with fire departments, and also, you know, if we have an incident where we have a dig in or something like that, a gas, a pro-gas leak of gas, we talk with the fire departments. She provides programs for those folks. Cole County Rural, those folks we have meetings with frequently. We try to get with the EMS folks. We also try to get with the cities here in the county. We also get with those folks and talk to their public officials, plus their fire department and the police department. We do offer a post program, which we offer, Ramona certified through post, provide.
Thank you.
Credits for the licenses, so, and then we've offered that free of charge. We, I believe it's two hours of credits for the continuing education. We're more than happy to do that. We do it for free. We come to the department, so if the sheriff would be interested in that, we'd be more than happy to do that. Yeah, we don't want those, we don't want those police officers running into danger that they don't understand or realize what's happening, because natural gas can, you know, you can outrun, you know, you can. Running to the danger is one thing, but we gotta know the dangers we're getting into, so those are all things, and we're sure we're happy to do that. We also do water, wastewater training, or Ramona does.
No, no, I'm glad you mentioned that.
And we actually have a chiefs meeting once a month. Now, that's coming up this Thursday, which might be. But our sheriff, I think, is the top dog for that right now, so maybe. And that is our JCPD, it's EMS, it's our fire departments, fire districts, so that might be a good meeting to come, just. But just talk with Sheriff.
Is it on the agenda?
Okay, not a problem.
Try it further. Can't do it this one, but the next one.
Yeah, you can get them all at one time.
Yeah, well, and if I can just come and introduce myself, I'll hand out the flyer, and then that'll be short and sweet, and then we can do a schedule to actually schedule outpost and fire programs with individual departments at a later date, so that's an option, too.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, give me one of your cards if you would.
I have one of hers.
Okay.
But I'm free to get a hold of it.
Yeah.
Set up a coffee urn, I'll show up.
Today, you've had too much, John.
Yeah, maybe y'all are right.
Thank you. I have to slow down there. I'm doing all right.
Hear this big scream out in the hall, I'm like, oh. Okay.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come and visit with you all again today, and have a wonderful day.
You, too. Thank you. Okay.
If my daughters are listening, this is my first cup of coffee.
We will move on. Bids and contracts. Bid award of 2022-21 telephone and video visitation.
Hey, we bid out the video and telephone visitations for the Sheriff's Department. We had eight vendors submit a response, and they did four demos and came to the conclusion that home wave would be the best vendor for their needs. The non-international calling and video visitation rate is 20 cents per minute, and then our commission is 80%, and the equipment would be zero cost to the county. Our recommendation is to award the 2022-21 to home wave, and we do have a contract to sign as well.
So the inmate is paying how much?
20 cents.
20 cents a minute, and we get 80% of that?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that a little steep?
No, I don't think so, but the other thing is, and that's actually pretty low, the rates.
Well, it could only be 100. I mean, that's the most it could be, right?
Well, I think SEC has came in and put a certain amount that it's governed at, but that's not the only, the only way that the money's made. There's also gonna be tablets. We're gonna be giving some of the inmates, so they'll be able to get their mail through the tablets, they'll be able to do video visitations through tablets, so it's, it's gonna cost them a little money to do that, but it's gonna be a lot more convenient for them, and it'll also be for us, a way for us to be able to control their behavior, because we'll take away the tablets and this stuff, and they can watch movies on them, so it's. It's a very good deal. It's a wicked good deal. Right, well, so the person who's calling pays. They can call collect, or the inmate can have money on their commissary, and they can pay out of that, too. So there's money.
So if they talk for five minutes, it's a dollar. That's.
Right.
So it's family or attorney or?
Attorneys are free.
Okay, so this is.
Family.
Family.
I'm fine.
All right. Get the first one.
I assume everything I said was correct, because none of my staff did not send me the email and say, "No, no, 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 no", so I guess we're good.
Make a motion to award the bid, sign the contract, put a telephone and video visitation with home wave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bid award and contract signing of Sheriff's Department vehicle maintenance.
We bid out the fleet vehicle maintenance for the Sheriff's Department, and we only had one vendor submit a response, which was Donnie Bronson's son. The sheriff is okay with their pricing on their services, and our recommendation is to award 2022-22 to Donnie Bronson's. And I do have a contract to sign as well.
What's the effective date on that?
August 15th.
What's the length of the contract?
A year.
One year. And we only had one bidder, right? Is that unusual?
Yes, sir. Very much so.
Maybe next year, we advertise earlier or knock on some doors or something. It's, and because this, this number is a bit more than what we were used to paying, too, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
We did, we did pretty good on putting it out there. I don't know what the, what the problem was on.
Go ahead and sign it, Jeff.
There was some miscommunication, I think, with some of the vendors on when they were supposed to submit it. I think that was one issue, but it wasn't on our part. Jessica was very clear on that.
Okay.
Tell you what, a lot of places now, they're, they're short of mechanics. It's trying to get a car in, and they say it's gonna be September 15th, and I'm like.
When I talked with Eric, and he was hitting these, they did pretty happy to go.
I am, yes.
You do have the contract, too, so. I make a motion. We award the bid and sign the contract for the Sheriff's Department vehicle maintenance with Donnie Bronson's all repaired.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Renewal one of 2021-16 EMS collection services.
This will be the first renewal for 2021-16 with LifeQuest Services for EMS collection services. They have agreed to keep their contingency rates the same. I discussed it with Eric, and he's okay with renewing the services with them for another year. So we're just recommending to renew with LifeQuest Services for another year, and I do have a contract.
Me, too, yeah.
All right, make a motion. We sign a renewal for EMS collection services with LifeQuest. Is it just LifeQuest?
LifeQuest Services.
LifeQuest Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this was on last week's agenda. We moved it. Approval and signing of overhead door company sole source.
This is a sole source for overhead door company of Central Missouri for purchasing the extra panels for the sheriff's current garage doors. The amount of the sole source is $16,000, $16,613. It's already ran in the paper, so today I'm just needing approval and signing of the sole source as well as the quote.
I'll give a transfer if you're today.
Make a motion to approve and sign the overhead door company sole source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, contract amendment for MO DHSS for Health Department, WIC contract.
Good morning. So this is for our current contract. The WIC contract runs on the federal fiscal year, October to September. So this contract is increased for this current year to cover the 5% cost of living raises that the county gave at the beginning of the year. WIC has really, and DHSS has changed the way that they are funding the WIC program. I think for, I don't know, decades, it's always been, you get this much per participant. Here's your lump sum. You figure out how to pay your staff and buy supplies, all that. Now, they've decided that because of the funding that's coming from the federal level, that they'll be able to say, "How much does it cost for you to run a successful WIC program?" So this year, we got an increase in the current year to cover those salary increases. And then next year, as Melinda's filling out her LAP, as they call it, local agency plan, she's gonna build in some, some increases for staff, because for a long time, they have not got any increases because the WIC program funding really didn't allow for it. But if they're going to say, "How much does it cost for you to run a successful program?", we are evaluating our staff salaries and looking what other WIC programs around us are paying, and we will be coming to you soon with that contract that starts in October. We'll have some staff increases built in, and it will be at no cost to the county because we will get reimbursed for the entire amount by the WIC program. So this is sort of the first step to increasing the funding for that program. The next step will be the contract that starts October 2022 and runs through September 2023. So Melinda's been working our local agency plan. We hope to have it before the budget is due September 1st, but we're close. So I'll be building that into next year's budget, knowing that that funding will increase in October, and we will want those staff increases to start in October. Like I said, the important part is it will be at no cost to the county. Any questions about that? We like more money.
I have a motion to sign and execute the program services contract. Contract title of WIC Local Agency Nutrition Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of stormwater grant agreement with Missouri Department of Economic Development.
This grant is for the South Brooks Drive Stormwater Project. The grant that we received, give or take a couple months ago. We recently signed the agreement with the Minmo RPC to do the grant administration. This is just part of the standard process of receiving these funds through the Missouri Department of Economic Development. There's an agreement we have to sign that lays out the process for reimbursement, and there's some other provisions in there, and Minmo RPC will assist us in meeting all these terms of the grant. So we would recommend approval of this agreement with the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development, and Jill has reviewed this and approves this for signature. Any questions?
I scanned it. Eric, one little, little note. It shows the rep district as District 49, and I believe that should be 59. On the first page, item three, the three box. I assume this is Representative Veach's district?
I will verify that.
I don't think it matters necessarily.
Probably not. Jill, do you have any opinion on that? We could probably just make a little.
Initial it and, or change it and put an initial or something next to it. Alert the folks. They did it over this, at DED, right? That's where it came from. They should be, I think it's just a typo on their side.
What page was that on, Eric?
It's on the funding approval, the cover page.
Oh, that cover page, okay.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's not back in the contract. It's just.
Yeah, it's not part of this.
No.
We'll clarify that with them.
Okay. Okay, so I'll offer a motion to approve and sign the funding approval with DED for the wastewater, I'm sorry, no, it's the stormwater grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of Entrado Viper Call Handling Quote.
Morning.
Morning.
So as you recall, when the ARPA funds were approved for some of the things that we've initiated EMS, $250,000 was set aside for infrastructure upgrades. This project falls within that category, and what this is, is a remote answering point for 911, for the 911 system. And with this, we'll be joining as a secondary site on the Jefferson City Police Department 911 software. A little bit of history. Currently, if you call 911 in Cole County, it will ring to the Jefferson City Police Department. They'll ask you what type of emergency you're having, and if it's medical, that call will then be transferred either through internet or a copper wire, 1970s technology, over to the EMS Communication Center. We'll answer the phone, and with our current technology, we get none of the advanced locating, so no GPS coordinates, no address information from the caller, nothing like that. So we have to waste time re-asking those questions as they're trying to tell us what their emergency is. With this system, it basically eliminates all of that. So somebody will call 911. It'll be answered by the police department. They'll go ahead and start the call for service. Once it's determined it's a, it's a medical call, they just press a button, and it flashes on our computer screen. We answer, and we instantly see all of that same information. So we see caller's name, address, GPS coordinates. It populates to a map. So if we are getting multiple phone calls, we can tell that, you know, five calls are coming from the same general area reporting the same emergency, so if somebody else is calling from out in Russellville, they know to prioritize that call as a separate incident. What this really does is create another backup, so now we are directly tied through the PD. So the only way that we would have an issue is somebody were to cut the fiber line directly between the EMS building and the PD. Currently, if somebody were to cut the fiber line anywhere in, in basically the state of Missouri, we lose the ability to transfer phone calls between our communications center. This is all in an effort to create redundancy. Once this. Once this system's in place, our dispatchers can pretty much pick up, move to Fire Station 3 as a, as a backup center. They can move down to the PD. The phone systems will all be the same. They would just log in with their credentials and it would pull up the EMS phone system. So really a huge step forward as far as our 911 and, and the ability to serve folks having medical emergencies in the Cole County area. Total cost for this is $124,939.95. $45,000, or roughly $46,000 of that is annual maintenance fees for five years, which they've lumped into the initial contract. Jill has reviewed the terms and conditions. There was just one minor change to some insurance. So if this, you do approve this today, we'll just have Sam initial that page. But this is all part of the CAD system and, and streamlining 911 communications and dispatch service and a huge step forward to us. Big thank you to the city for allowing us to join onto their system. So just looking for approval and signing of this. Be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
I don't have any questions. That's a huge step forward.
Oh, it is, yeah.
I agree.
Very good. And thanks to the city, too.
Yeah, they've been really good partners.
So do we have a, okay, just need the approval and signing of the contract.
An initial.
IntradO Viper for the Call Handling Quote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any other unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review?
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Debbie, before I make that motion, there was one that popped up last week. Do, do we need a little retroactive, you know, there was no Accounts Payable last week, right? But, but there was a sort of an emergency during the week?
Yes.
Can I include that in? All right. And that was for the carport at, at Lincoln for the ambulance?
Yes. They want a payment when they put the building or the carport thing up. So we did do a special check.
We, we were unaware that they needed payment as soon as they completed the project. So we went ahead and thank you for generating a check on that.
And that was installed last week?
Yes.
Okay. And, and it's, it's so much cooler in the ambulance now as a result of that, right?
Unfortunately, we've got a bunch of cloud cover out there today. It will make a noticeable difference, I'm sure of that.
Okay. So I, I'll make a motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review and note the check written last week for the, what do we call it? The carport at Lincoln University for EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we did the United Way Campaign. Approving a proposal with RN Mobile Drug Testing.
This is for testing for pre-employment, for randoms, for DOT drug testing. It's just basically a proposal with a rate charge for type of test they do. We currently had, they're going through a Minmo Regional Drug Testing and they would do the testing at capital region. This is a different company that can come on site, do the testing right here for us, especially at public works. And I think this would be a lot smoother than what we currently are having. We do have some issues with some departments getting results back fast enough. So I would suggest that we go with this RN Mobile Drug Testing. And Sheila has worked with them before, so we have some bit of a history with them. So I would ask that we approve that with them and cancel the other one.
And, and one of the other issues currently was if there was an accident involving a driver who was a county employee, this gets the test much quicker.
They will come on site. There'll be a number they have to call, the way I understand, to get them to do that or we can send them somewhere depending on when, when it is.
And even if it's an off-hour kind of thing, right?
Yeah. And the blood alcohol, sheriff's already gone. The red alcohol test was a factor. The hospital was not wanting to do those tests anymore because it requires special certification of staff and some other hoops. So they were not doing those tests. And so on, a DOT person or law enforcement personnel, if we had an after-hours injury or incident, we were having difficulty complying with our policy requirements. And RN Mobile Drug Testing does do that. They will come on site or be available on industrial in very short notice and around the clock.
Good. Okay. Make a motion to sign a proposal with RN Mobile Drug Testing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to postpone the prosecution. Prosecuting Attorney Salary Grant Discussion until next week's agenda. So we have the approval of Small Community Cooperative Project Funding Award Amounts.
So second round of a very successful program in this new sales tax that started this year. We're doing the Small Community Cooperative Projects again. The amount available, this sales tax was $1 million, $1 million up from 800 in the previous sales tax. There was $10,877 that was left over from one of the projects in the previous program that was moved as recommended by the Roden Bridge Advisory Board into this current program. So that's, that's why that number's slightly higher than 1 million. We had six projects and all very good projects. Six of the seven communities submitted an application. Here's a copy of the applications right here. Very thorough job done by all the communities and they've really taken upon themselves to think of what some good improvements would be in their community and put forth a, a good effort to put an application into the county. Our process as, the same as last time, was that the Roden Bridge Advisory Board would be the review committee to look at these and go through a process of scoring them. And then once that was done, determine a funding recommendation. So that was done on July 19th. The members of the community, the, the Roden Bridge Advisory Board that did the review were Don Hillis, Larry Bishop, Bruce Dawson, Jim Wonderlick, and Greg Bowman. Harry Otto is a member of the Roden Bridge Advisory Board, but abstained from that process because it would come to the County Commission for Vote, so he did not partake in that. They did a very thorough review and very thoughtful when recommending the funding for the projects. As what was previously publicized with the communities, the maximum they could receive was $250,000. And the amounts were presented to you all in the form of a, a table there. So Wardsville, Russellville, St. Thomas, St. Martin's, Loma, and Centertown all have received some funds. The total requested out of all of those was $1,227,923. So some of the request was not fully met. And they, the board that reviewed, looked at the scores and if you look at them, the top three scores received full funding. The lower three scores did not. However, I've visited with those three communities and said that we could probably work out some things and I offer, we will offer some suggestions on how they can achieve the maximum project for the money that they do have. So we can work around some of the lesser amounts that they got, but it's still a good amount for them to put forth towards their project. So with that all said, I would acknowledge that representatives from Russellville are here. Thanks for coming.
That's right, Mayor and Clark.
Yeah, I appreciate you all being here for this. And so with that said, I could go through the, the projects and whatnot, but you all have that in front of you. We would recommend that the County Commission accept the recommendation from the Roden Bridge Advisory Board and award as shown on the sheet. Wardsville would receive $250,000. Russellville, $236,489. St. Thomas, $59,590. St. Martin's, $164,798. And Loma and Centertown, both would receive $150,000 each. So that's about all I have. Do you have any questions of me or any thoughts or ideas about the process or the program?
I appreciate the hard work of the, the committee that, that studied the requests and, and came up with these numbers. They did a good job.
They did.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
So going forward, you guys can vote on this, but just real quick, going forward, the next step would be send out a one-sheet form that the committee, or that each community would sign, agreeing to the, the amount awarded by the County Commission. And then once they do that, each community will sign an agreement with the commission that lays out the distribution of the funds, just like last time, same process. So it'll be, over the next few weeks, we'll be working on that and coming back to you with those agreements and other things. And then ideally, we'll have all this set where we can put it into our budget because some of these projects will need to be budgeted for next year. So we'll have to budget that reimbursement for next year. So.
Nope, I'm good. I appreciate you doing this and it really helps our communities too, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the made with respect to the Small Community Cooperative Project Funding for, that came through the Roden Bridge Advisory? Board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion of ARPA funding. I think we're what, on our third?
Pass.
Yeah, third pass.
I, I did ask, well, first of all, you know, we do have some guests here today from the western side of the county. Do, do either of those officials care to comment, say hello, or mayor? No?
Who are you?
Bring a speech?
I didn't bring cookbooks either.
I'm the mayor. Just want to thank you for allowing us to have that money to do sidewalks, improve our sidewalks to school. Oh, it's for the intersection. Oh, for the intersection. I thought I said sidewalks. We, we need the intersection changed so people don't run.
Run over each other.
Yeah, run around the flagpole.
The previous project funded last year was, or two years ago, was just such a success. I still get comments from our residents and people who have come in town saying, oh my gosh, that street looks so nice. We did major stormwater improvements and repaid Marion Street. And it's just made such a difference to our community. It is something we could have done on our own. So we, so thank, so appreciate your help to make these improvements to our community.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for the job you do out there in Russellville.
Yeah. But hopefully, you know, we're on our third.
I did want to mention this. One of the, this was, when I talked to Debbie yesterday, one of the applicants, part of their funding is to, to make their project go is a tax credit that, that it's dependent upon a state agency to award those tax credits. So my question was, can we, if we decide to contribute towards that or help fund that project, would, could we make it contingent upon them obtaining the tax credit? So you've, you've sent the question out to BKD on that one, right?
I did send a few questions to Teresa. Basically, that was one of them. And asking too, if you guys, with this third pass, if you guys decide on five or six projects you're wanting to send to them for them to review to make sure it qualifies, then how much would they charge for that basically? And then, you know, if a project doesn't get completed by the 2024 encumbered, you know, if we're giving, if we say we're giving somebody $200,000 for this project, do we wait till the project's underway, complete it before we give them the money? All those kind of questions are still on the table to Forbes right now or BKD. So it's kind of however you want to go from here. If you're ready to take two or three of the projects and send them to them or review to make sure, again, they qualify in all aspects of what they're asking for. There may be part of the project that is just not qualified, you know, but so.
So we have to make sure they're qualified regardless. And they're charging us by the hour, so if there's some special, especially the internal ones, I think that we all kind of agreed on some of those that I think all three of us are probably ready to move forward on those. So maybe we, I don't know, haul the internal ones or pick a few of them that are the top of our list and see where they match.
Okay.
I mean, there's a couple of external ones. I know they're chomping at the bit because some of them are shovel-ready. But I think some of the other questions pertain to those, so.
They do.
I think I would be fine waiting on those.
Well, go ahead.
Well, some of them where we are basically in agreement on, on, you know, the amount we're going to give. I guess we could move.
Or you could start with particular, you know, going into the cities or going into the water districts or, you know, especially, you know, doing all those in one group effort and then maybe coming up with a budget plan for which, you know, just if we can eliminate some of them, we start it with 53. I think you're kind of down to about 38 as of this point. But then if we can just get in our mind what kind of budget and maybe start with, I don't know, just that, however you want to do it.
Why don't we firm up our internal ones first?
Okay.
And get those out of the way. We've, I think we're, we're close to being of like mind on those. And whatever, I don't know what it would take from BKD to say yes to that, but I mean, that's almost like just a ditto check mark, right?
We can do that. We can send those to them. There's a lot of information on the internal ones I don't have, you know, other than a dollar amount, you know, and what the project is.
But that can come under that $10 million umbrella, right?
Most definitely.
And we are not really using BKD. So I mean, the, the money we have allocated for them, we're going to.
We have a contract with them, so I did encumber the whole amount not to exceed that. So it is by the hour though, however we use that. But I still think we, internal not so bad if it's within the 10 million. If that's where you want that money to come from, then we don't have to worry about it so much.
Well, maybe we, if it qualifies under the 14.9 million, maybe we, we move it over there. That gives more flexibility on what's left, right?
Good idea.
So we would, we would take that out of the non-10.
We can do, I can send the internal ones to them now.
Okay.
And see what we can get. Because I think it's probably only five or six, right?
I thought it was four something, but whatever it is.
Okay. Wow, look at it again. Yeah.
I mean, we've already, the premium pay is a done deal.
Right.
That was 600 roughly?
That we've spent, yes.
Yes. Okay. So we move that to the non-10.
And that kind of was there because it was its own category. It was outside of the 10. So we just kind of left it there because that's the guidelines that they had. It was outside of the government's 10.
Some of the EMS and, and sheriff over there as well?
No, that's inside the 10.
Does, should it be?
That's how I've reported it.
Oh, I see.
Put it that way.
Okay.
The second, the last quarter, I reported it in there because payments had been made.
Got it. All right.
So Pringer is outside the?
It's wherever we want to put that one at this point because we haven't started making any payments to that. That one hasn't actually been approved yet.
Okay.
So I'll take those internal ones back to them and get recommendations from them on those and then get back with you guys. And hopefully I'll get some answers on those questions we talked about.
Right. And one of the questions is, we're, we get up to the end of '26 and we can see the end of '26 coming and it isn't, it's going to, not going to finish. What do we do?
Right.
Do we scramble to find a, a, a place? Or are we looking for an extension? Or is, are the country looking for an extension on that?
I don't think anybody knows yet.
Right. And I did ask them that, if there's any word about, if they've heard anything about extending those deadlines. The biggest problem is, you know, if we use our money of the 10 million first, so to say, and then a different project doesn't go, if that money has to be sent back or can that money come back over into part of our 10 million?
Right.
So those kind of questions. I mean, you would think '24 seems like a long way away, but it's really not. We're talking about major construction projects, so.
Okay.
Being encumbered by then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. How did we, you're doing on our agendas or anything, Jeff, you got or?
No, I figured you had a long agenda. I wouldn't go hold things up.
Okay. I'm just so, I'm just so speedy. I'm just, I didn't know how long Ameren would be, so, okay, well.
Well, hey, we got LV's birthday. Where's he at?
His birthday's today?
Yeah. It's not on your calendar. I thought he had on all of our calendars.
No, I, no.
He might have taken the day off. We got our board meeting, so he may be down there a day early. It'll be his birthday, so.
Okay.
Looking forward to seeing it for him.
Well, then our next.
It's a good thing he's not here.
Next scheduled meeting is August 16th, 2022 at 9:00 AM.
Wait a minute, no. We've changed the time on that.
Oh, it's 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM.
Next week's meeting is at 8:00.
Okay. Motion to go stand in recess?
Motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.